Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our board meeting tonight. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda, will you call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Here.
Trustee Raco?
Here.
Trustee Sheehan?
Here.
Trustee Casera?
Here.
Trustee Zora?
Trustee Lotner?
Here.
President DiCipio?
Here.
Corum is present.
Thank you, Amanda. I'd like to also introduce Stessa and George from the Youth Commission. Thank you for joining us tonight and look forward to your input. Next is public participation of agenda and non-agenda related items. If anyone would care to address the board, please step up to the mic and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Melissa Leed and I live at 1205 Metal Crest Road. I'm here today to hopefully briefly give my opinion about the resurfacing of the streets and the way that we're spending, or proposing on spending our money for the resurfacing. I believe a scientific method is needed to inventory existing streets to assess the condition of the streets, to analyze if the streets are actually functioning or performing per its intended design life, and to ascertain viable future repair, replacement, reconstruction, and overlay options. My question to the board is, do they have the information that is available to assess the streets? Basic information includes the current condition, the age, the design life, the maintenance costs, how well they are performing, the amount of traffic, upcoming sewer and other underground work, maintenance schedule, and available funds. Without this information available, it is difficult to assess the most cost-effective solution for each street. A lifecycle cost analysis should then be performed once the information is gathered and priority of streets determined. The response from the Talon Hall meeting in February when I asked about lifecycle cost analysis is that the board would generally loosely stated is that they would rather not spend money on a 60-page report and that it wasn't necessary. My initial response is that if $10 million is on the table for the first decade, then a formal study should be performed, especially since there's a high probability that there will be another bond request when this is done, and then another, and then another, and so on. I do not see any due diligence performance support that the board plans to catch up will actually meet that goal. It is even more critical, as it is acknowledged, that we're already way behind in addressing the streets to begin with. There should be a street asset management program. Our streets are an asset and should be treated as such. At the very least, if the inspection has already passed its point, then proposals should be obtained from a qualified specifier to obtain alternates instead of just overlays, so we can get actual costs to determine what the most cost-effective solution for our streets are. There are many things wrong with our streets that include potholes, cracks, ruts, uneven pavements, open seams, peeling, asphalt separation, and loss of aggregate resurfacing. Many of these deficiencies that recur over and over are due to inadequate underlay, improper design, poor workmanship, deficient materials, and temporary repairs. With an overlay deficiencies in the substrate will show up through the new overlay if not properly corrected, thereby reducing the intended service life and increasing the maintenance costs.
30 seconds left.
So, in summary, I am requesting that a formal inspection be performed so we can not only identify the streets that are in need of priority projects, but then if we don't know what is wrong with our streets for repairs, we don't have a specification that could be put forth competitively good for repairing our streets to ensure that they are meeting their intended design life. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And if you could please give Julia your report and comments, if you could provide her with those later, that would be great.
Sure, I already emailed them too, but...
Beautiful. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to address the board? Okay, as many of you are aware, that on March 15th, the village has two important questions for residents to consider. There are two referendum on the ballots. One is for a $10 million road program, and the other is a $1.2 million referendum for ladder truck and fire truck. We also want the village to know that with these two referendum, we're also doing and looking forward to economic development improvements in our community, and that's the reason why we have our presentation tonight on our TIF district, or TIF presentation. We want to consider that the village is in immediate need of our streets' repair, and also the need for an ambulance and fire truck, but we're not taking lightly the need to increase our economic development program. And so with that, I'd like to introduce tonight a presentation by Fran Leifer from SB Friedman on our tax increment financing feasibility study. Fran, would you care to step up? Thank you.
Try that again. Fran LaFleur-Rude with SB Friedman Development Advisors. I'm a senior project manager, and you've met Lance Dorn, a project manager with SB Friedman as well. So tonight, we're going to walk you through our eligibility findings for five potential study areas within the village, and then we'll also talk about the revenue projections and recommendations for moving forward. So Lance is going to talk about the eligibility criteria for each of the areas, and I think it'd be great if we could hold the questions until we get to the end of that section, and then after Lance finishes that section, then I'll come back and talk about projections and some of the other work we've done and potential next steps.
We have evaluated TIF eligibility for five study areas throughout the village, as you can see on this map here. We looked at three commercial areas along 31st Street, the Village Market area, and then the Barnesdale Industrial Corridor. So there are several paths that... Sorry. The TIF Act outlines several different paths that one could take to get to TIF eligibility. There are different paths for both improved parcels and vacant blighted parcels. For an area to be considered a TIF-eligible conservation area, at least 50% of the structures within the district must be at least 35 years of age or older, and they must exhibit three of the 13 criteria outlined within the Illinois TIF Act. To be qualified as a blighted area, the parcels, age is not a factor, but the parcels must exhibit five of those same 13 criteria. In terms of vacant land, there are two different approaches. The first approach is the one-factor approach, and that's a very specific set of criteria, and it's focused more on specific uses that have caused blight, so that's rail yards, queries, dumping sites. The two-factor approach is a little bit more broad and applies to greater variety of uses. The TIF Act outlines six separate eligibility factors for that qualification, and the parcels within that area must exhibit two of those six qualifying factors. The TIF Act also outlines that all factors, all TIF eligibility factors must be found to a present and meaningful extent throughout the TIF district and reasonably distributed throughout the area. So that means primarily that you can't have basically a concentration of TIF eligibility factors maybe just on one portion of the district, and then including a greater area. It has to be distributed throughout the total study area. So our process for looking at TIF eligibility is outlined here. We start by doing parcel-by-parcel fieldwork, really looking at the external property conditions. We also pulled together a number of different data sources, including the assessed value of the parcels, any prior plans that the village has conducted, building age data, building permit and code violation data. We also reviewed village and county code, development codes, including stormwater, subdivision, building, fire. We looked at utility data provided by the village and had discussions with village staff, and also obtained GIS parcel shape files. So what we do is we really pull together all of these different data sources and evaluate TIF eligibility on a parcel-by-parcel basis, looking for parcel-level eligibility factors as well as area-wide factors. The first area that we looked at was the Village Market area, and for this first study area, we're going to go into a little bit more detail, just so you understand our approach to determining TIF eligibility, as well as how we arrived at our conclusions. So we'll step factor by factor through our eligibility criteria for the remainder of the study areas. Just for time's sake, we're providing a summary, but we're happy to answer any questions you have regarding specific eligibility factors for those. So our parcel-by-parcel fieldwork data revealed that the entire Village Market study area is improved parcels, meaning that they have permanent improvements on the parcel. We think this area qualifies for a TIF district under the conservation area portion of the TIF Act. That is because 96% of the buildings within the study area are aged 35 or older, and we also have found that there are four eligibility factors present to a meaningful extent and reasonably distributed throughout the area. So those factors are deterioration, lack of growth and equalized assessed value, inadequate utilities, and the presence of structures below minimum code. So digging a little bit deeper into those eligibility factors, what we look for in deterioration is a number of things, and this is really why we do our parcel-by-parcel fieldwork. We're looking for cracks in driveways, cracks in streets, parking lots, any foundation issues we can find, problems with brickwork, issues with windows, porches, that kind of, any type of deterioration of the physical improvements to the building. We found that 16 of 26 of the parcels within the Village Market study area exhibit some degree of deterioration, and that is 62% of the parcels. So we have concluded that deterioration is a factor that is present to a meaningful extent and distributed throughout the study area. There are just some examples of the type of deterioration that we found, some potholes in the streets, crackings of the pavement, just some foundation issues, stuff like that. The second factor that we've found present in the Village Market area is lack of growth and equalized assessed value. So here we review the Cook County Assessor data. The TIF Act outlines three different ways in which you can get to TIF eligibility to prove that there's been a lack of growth in EAV. The first is that EAV has declined at least three of the five, last three of the five year-to-year periods, three of the previous five year-to-year periods, or that the EAV has increased at a rate below that of the remainder of the village. And then the third option is that the EAV would increase at a rate less than the Consumer Price Index over the last five periods. So what we found specifically in the Village Market area is that EAV declined in four of the five periods, and that the EAV increased at a rate less than the village and less than the CPI of three, at least three of the last five periods. Next factor that we looked at was the presence of adequate utilities to service the areas. We had discussions with village staff and looked and reviewed utility data, and what we found was that this area lacks adequate stormwater management facilities, and that the size of the storm sewer mains in this area result in flooding. So we look at all the full spectrum of utilities within the area, and these are the two that we identified as being inadequate within the area. Final factor that we found prevalent in the Village Market area is the presence of structures below minimum code. So what we do here is re-review the building code, the zoning code, the stormwater management code, and trying to evaluate whether these properties meet all of the building codes. So that's really looking at all of them, not just specifically one. What we determined here was that 100% of the parcels do not meet all of these building or development codes, and that's not to say that they are in direct violation of whatever building code or development code, but they are not up to the current minimum standard of the code. So that may mean that they're grandfathered in to the existing code, or if there were some sort of change or use within the properties that some degree of improvements would need to be made to the building to bring it up to code in order for that change of use to occur. So as I mentioned, we determined that 100% of the parcels don't meet at least one of those codes, and the one that we found to be most prevalent is the stormwater management ordinance. We also had some discussions with the village staff who determined that buildings throughout the study area had some degree of not meeting the fire prevention code. So not all of them, but some of them. Moving on to the remainder of the study areas here, we're pretty much going to give you a high-level review of our TIF eligibility factors, following that same type of thought process that we used in the Village Market area. If anyone has any specific questions on eligibility, we'll be happy to answer them after we make it through the five study areas. The second study area that we evaluated is what we're calling the 31st Street West area, so it's the intersection of 31st Street and LaGrange Road. We determined that all of the parcels within the study area are improved land, and that 67% of the buildings are at least 35 years of age. So that allows us to pursue TIF eligibility under the conservation area component of the TIF Act. So again, we just need to find three eligibility factors within this study area, and we did find four, in fact. And again, it's many of the same ones that you saw in the Village Market area. So inadequate utilities, here again, we're focusing on the stormwater management component of the utilities. The lack of growth and equalized assessed value. Again, similar to the Village Market area, we've seen decline in four of the last five year-to-year periods, and that the growth within this district has been less than that of the village for three of the past five periods, and less than the Consumer Price Index for five of the last five periods. The presence of structures below minimum code, again, that's similar to the Village Market area, and we did find deterioration throughout the study area, as we described in the previous section. The next section, or the next study area we evaluated was what we're calling 31st Street East. It's the intersection of 31st Street and Maple Avenue. We determined that all of the parcels within this area are improved. We think it qualifies for the conservation area component of the TIF Act. All buildings are 35 years of age or older. So again, we just have to find three factors present within the area, and we did find four in this area, and then one minor factor. So the factors that we found were inadequate utilities, lack of growth and equalized assessed value, presence of structures below minimum code, and a new one that you haven't seen yet, which is excessive land coverage. So this eligibility factor is really looking at how closely the buildings are to one another and how much of the parcel that they cover. So the TIF Act explicitly says that... So this is where the proximity of the buildings result in limited access to public right-of-way, provide limited off-street parking, or just the proximity of the buildings increase the threat of the spread of fire. So that is the fourth factor that we found present within the 31st Street East area. The fourth study area was the 31st Street Central. Again, here, we found that all of the parcels within the district are, within the study area, are improved parcels. 97% of the buildings are at least 35 years of age or older, which allows us to pursue the conservation area designation. The eligibility factors that we found present throughout the area to a meaningful extent and reasonably distributed are inadequate utilities, again, the stormwater utility, lack of growth and equalized assessed value, this is similar to the other study areas in terms of which periods, presence of structures below minimum code, excessive land coverage, as we just discussed on the East District, and deterioration. The fifth study area that we evaluated was the Barnesdale Corridor. Here, our TIF fieldwork revealed that we have both improved land and vacant land. The parcels to the west of the railroad tracks are improved land, and the parcel, the former Praxair site on the east of the railroad tracks is currently vacant. So here, we would need to pursue two different paths to TIF eligibility, one for the improved land and one for the vacant land. We think this area could be designated as a TIF conservation area. 73% of the buildings are at least 35 years of age or older, and the eligibility factors that we have found present to a meaningful extent and distributed throughout the area are deterioration, inadequate utilities, again, the stormwater utility, lack of growth and equalized assessed value. Here, we found that there has been decline in equalized assessed value for five of the last five periods, and the presence of structures below minimum code. For the vacant blighted area, we think this qualifies for a TIF under the two-factor approach. We have found that there is lack of growth and equalized assessed value. We also think this area suffers from obsolete plating. And the language that is used in the TIF Act is parcels that are irregular in size or shape, and that may not be compatible with contemporary standards. And since the shape of the Praxair site is largely, the bulk of the Praxair site is largely behind the Cook County building, we would say that that does not meet contemporary parcel standards. While we were doing our TIF research here, we did run across one issue, and that is that the east side of the TIF district is not contiguous with the west side. And that is because we discovered that the railroad pin that we thought would connect the two sides, it's actually located within unincorporated Cook County and is not within the village of LaGrange Park. The TIF Act is written in such a way that you cannot jump unincorporated land in order to have contiguity between the two sides. So there are several different approaches that we could take to create one cohesive TIF district here, or you could potentially pursue designation of the Praxair site individually. One of the potential paths to having a contiguous site would be to annex the railroad pin, so that's the railroad north of 26th Street. The second would be to include the parcels that you see in blue within the TIF district area, so that is a portion of the railroad pin south of 26th Street, as well as the parking lots that are to the south of the Cook County building. And to get contiguity, because it appears that the Cook County building is also within unincorporated Cook County, we would need to include a number of residential properties in order to, I think it's two properties, in order to have contiguity there. So this is relevant to all of the study areas. We have to find, there are two other required findings and tests that are outlined within the TIF Act that we have to be able to meet in order to designate the area as a TIF district. We have to conclude that there's been a lack of private, lack of growth and private investment within each of the study areas. So here, we reviewed building permit data and looked at the equalized assessed values that we had pulled for the previous analyses. What we determined is that the area, each of the study areas has seen really not much redevelopment. There has been some improvements of buildings, but, and no real large-scale redevelopment within any of the study areas within the last several years. As I mentioned, most of the investments have been really in maintenance and like upgrades, but no big redevelopment. And just to further prove this finding, EAV has declined in each of the study areas. The second, or the final finding that we need to meet is the but-for analysis. So this is including that redevelopment within each of the study areas would be unlikely to incur but-for the designation of these areas as TIF districts, and we concluded that each of the study areas do pass this required test, and that's largely due to the challenges that are associated with doing infill development. So any development that would occur in any of these study areas would be a redevelopment of what's already there, which is challenging, especially given the fact that there's often diverse ownership and there's a need to assemble sites. You may also need to make public infrastructure improvements, which can be quite costly. So in summary, for the TIF designation component of the presentation, we think that all study areas appear to meet the eligibility criteria as outlined in the Illinois TIF Act. We think they can be designated as conservation areas. And then the Praxair site could be included within a Barnesdale Corridor TIF if you were to pursue either the annexation of the railroad pin or the inclusion of the additional parcels. And again, that discontiguity would need to be addressed in order to include that, or it could be a standalone TIF district. One thing in terms of eligibility, you may have noticed that there was some overlap between the Barnesdale Corridor and the 31st Street Corridor, and that is the Chemgrau site. We think that this overlap does give you the potential to combine both of those districts into one if you were to pursue TIF designation, and really that would be when you're drafting the redevelopment plan, you basically outline priorities and goals that would address both the commercial corridor as well as the industrial corridor. Yeah, I guess we can take questions now.
Lance, thank you, and Fran, you'll get up and say a few more words. Lance, you've designated five areas which we brought forward to you to look and see if they were eligible. You've come back and you said that all five are eligible.
Right.
In your professional opinion, I mean, does a community go out and pick an area? Do they go out and pick a couple areas? I mean, what is economically feasible and what is traditionally held? I mean, the five that you have designated certainly are, but your recommendation is not to go to all five?
Yeah, we do come to recommendations a little bit later in our presentation.
Okay.
Should I go over them now?
Well, we can wait. Any comments from the board? Anybody want to have any questions at this point? Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could you elaborate a little bit, unless you're going to upcoming here in the rest of your presentation, on conservation areas?
Just what a conservation area is?
So a conservation area under the TIF law means that it's in danger of falling into disrepair or blight. It's not the same as finding an area already blighted. It's more about preventing blight from happening in the districts. Really the only difference.
Conserve it.
Right, you need fewer eligibility factors, so it's an indication that things could be moving in that direction, but the intent is really to stop blight from happening.
So not necessarily improve it, but conserve it from getting in worse condition?
Conserve it and ideally improve it as well.
Ideally.
Okay.
I don't see any more questions at this point from the board. Trustee Messick? Sure, go ahead.
At the Barnesdale Corridor, we talked about annexing the railroad property. How involved does that cost?
Yeah, I think I would refer the issues with annexation to staff. They would be more able to handle that.
Emily?
Staff did have an initial conversation with, it's on, can you hear me? With IHB regarding the potential to annex... With IHB regarding the potential to annex that parcel. They did indicate that they were receptive to that, but we have not done any further research into that. If the board's direction is that they would like us to look into that further, we would look at what the costs would be associated with that in the timeframe.
And it generally does, it's a process which involves a public hearing, usually the drafting of an annexation agreement between the owner of the property and the village. And it requires, unless the, unless it qualifies as property that can be forcibly annexed by the village, it requires voluntary agreement by the owner. I believe we looked into this, Marty Bork, who was filling in for Emily, and I looked into that. It cannot be forcibly annexed, so we have to do it with the railroad's agreement.
Okay, Fran?
I guess we know that these areas qualify potentially as TIF districts, and you could move forward with the TIF districts, but part of what you had asked us to do back in the fall when we were engaged was to also think about, when would it actually make sense for these districts to create a, to create a TIF? So we did some initial sort of high-level market research, looking at retail occupancies, recent absorption, not just in the village, but also in surrounding villages. And then we also started thinking about which sites maybe could be considered potential redevelopment sites in the near term and then also over the long term. So walk through those, and I think that will provide some context for our recommendations for maybe which districts you'd want to focus on going forward. Overall, there is very high retail occupancy, both within LaGrange Park and also in LaGrange, Brookfield, Western Springs. You're above ninety percent occupancy here, and some of the surrounding communities are in the ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent range, and have also had quite a bit of redevelopment activity recently and planned redevelopment activity. So that indicates that there's a pretty, that there is potentially some market demand here that could potentially be absorbed going forward. We'd have to do more research to have, I think, very specific findings about what could be possible, but I think those are positive indications. There's also been new industrial development in Brookfield in particular over the past five to ten years, so there's been new product absorbed there. They have very high occupancy. I know a couple of the buildings in Barnesdale Corridor are not necessarily as well occupied, but that could be due to the fact that they're older construction, maybe don't meet modern standards. So I think that, that indicates that you maybe want to look a little bit more closely at the Praxair site and think about, you know, is there some potential to attract a user here? I think there might be a rail spur on the site that's important to some tenants, but I think there's some, some potential there. And then we also have the residential development proposed. There's some condos proposed in downtown LaGrange. That's actually something that we haven't seen in very many communities coming out of the recession, that condos are actually being developed at this point. So that's a pretty good indication that, you know, there's strong residential demand here, and there's the large multifamily project under construction just south, you know, of the Village Market site. So there's quite a bit of activity happening around the area, which suggests that we might have some possibilities within, within some of these TIF districts for some redevelopment. And I think that's particularly true of maybe the Village Market area. There's not a lot of sites available currently, but, you know, we have at least one vacant site. And then also, I think, thinking about the Barnesdale Corridor and the sort of Thirty-First Street Central area, which have more traffic, more visibility, maybe more potential there. So I think to unpack that a little bit further, one thing we talk about at SB Friedman quite often when we're doing TIF designations or redevelopment strategies is this idea of sites susceptible to change. So we have a lot of development. We have a lot of businesses active in all of these districts. And I just want to be very clear that we're not talking about displacing any existing businesses. We're not talking about any sort of wholesale redevelopment. What we're really looking for is those sites that are currently underutilized. So what's vacant? What is, maybe what has high vacancy in terms of tenancy is what is underutilized in terms of a small building on a very large site. What do we have in terms of property valuation compared to parcels nearby? And I guess one other thing that we like to look at is, do you have a large property owner in any, in any, any specific situation? So if you have five different property owners that you have to negotiate with in order to get a parcel that is of an appropriate size to redevelop, that's going to be a lot more complicated than if there's one property owner that the village can work with or that a potential developer can work with. So we're also looking for concentrations of ownership in districts where you might be able to work with property owners either on improving their own property or thinking about redevelopment opportunities down the line. So the first, the first area is the Village Market area. We first were looking for near-term redevelopment opportunities, so, you know, we have this one, the former Pancake House site. It's really the only vacant parcel that somebody could come in and propose a redevelopment project, purchase the site, and sort of get going. We know it's of an appropriate size for at least a small restaurant, standalone restaurant, could be a small retail center. But I think that's sort of the first near-term opportunity here. Longer term, we do have the Village Market area. First floor is very well occupied. I think when you go around to the backside, some of the second floor has some occupancy issues. It is sort of an aging building. So as we're thinking about, you know, the life of a TIF district, which is twenty-three years, at some point in those twenty-three years, you would think that this becomes a potential redevelopment opportunity. Altogether, it's a six, six-point-six acre site, so that's a pretty substantial area that could be potentially redeveloped in the future. Same with the Jewel Osco site. This is, this area, it's the Jewel Osco, and then there's all of the parking in front and the bank site. It has a pretty low Florida area, floor area ratio, FAR. So that means the size of the building in comparison to the total acreage is pretty low. So there's a lot of parking here, and some maybe potential to develop an additional outlet in front. That, of course, depends on access, visibility, finding the right tenant, things like that, but that could also be a potential longer-term redevelopment opportunity. Thirty-First Street West and East, I guess on the west side, no real short-term opportunities. I think we, in terms of longer-term opportunities, we were really looking at these two sites that are farther north along LaGrange Road. So that's the existing Jiffy Lube and the Superior Cleaner site. Those are really a situation too where it's just kind of a low FAR for a commercial corridor. They have a lot of parking. It's totally appropriate for the businesses that are there. Businesses, I think, are doing fine, and there's no reason to think that they would be moving on in the near future. But, you know, as time goes on, especially if you could combine those two sites, that could present a redevelopment opportunity, assuming you can deal with, the one issue you might have is access still onto LaGrange Road, but that's sort of the clearest opportunity in this district going forward. For Thirty-First Street East, we actually didn't identify any near-term or even longer-term redevelopment opportunities. I know there's a restrictive covenant on the Betty Scheck Senior Center, so that, that site can't really be redeveloped, I believe. The bank has just invested some in their corner, and I think they've been a long-term tenant there and are probably unlikely to move, and that would be kind of your best site in this district. And there are just a lot of small buildings, a lot of business owners, a lot, I think, a lot of challenges here, and not, not really the scale of site that would make redevelopment feasible, probably in the near term or the longer term. So Thirty-First Street Central, and actually, this overlaps with Barnesdale Corridor, so this is the Chemgrout Site. This is an issue where, you know, you have an operating business. I think they're doing well. But the, the underlying zoning of this site doesn't match the current use. So it's sort of an industrial use. It's on your main commercial corridor going through town. I think longer term, you may want to think about, you know, if Chemgrout moves or if they are looking to expand into a bigger site somewhere else, you would probably want to transition this to something more sort of retail-commercial oriented, which I believe is the underlying zoning at this point. So that's a longer-term opportunity, probably not happening in the very near term, but something to consider. And then for Barnesdale Corridor, of course, we have, Praxair is a clear, I think that should actually probably be, oh, it is, sorry, it is shown as orange, which is the near term. So that's a near-term redevelopment opportunity. We also have two other buildings that are somewhat underutilized, and one building that's for sale. And so those are sort of near-term possibilities. That's not saying that these are necessarily easy redevelopment areas. They are large existing buildings, but there is some potential for change in these areas. And so we do think Barnesdale Corridor is, is an area that the village should potentially focus on and think about in terms of TIF districts. So moving on to the projections, I know the village also wanted to think about potential revenue that could be generated by these districts before making any decisions going forward. So we have done preliminary projections of revenue for each of the districts. We actually did an alternate scenario for Village Market, the Village Market area, assuming that that Pancake House site was developed as a restaurant. And we pulled out the Praxair site from the Barnesdale Corridor, just so you could see the difference between the two. So in the, in the center column, we have the potential TIF revenue in the first year of collections, which would be in 2018, just because of the way that there's a lag in property tax collections. If you designated this year, the first year of the TIF would be 2017, and you would actually receive those funds in calendar year 2018. And then we also have a column showing the total revenue over twenty-three years, the full life of the TIF district. And that is undiscounted, so we didn't assume any sort of bonding scenario. This would be kind of a pay-as-you-go situation where the, the village is receiving TIF each year and spends that money. So just know there's no sort of discount rate assumed here. So these projections are assuming no major redevelopment, just the one scenario where we are adding in the restaurant into the Village Market. So you see a range of Thirty-First Street East and West, something in the, in the neighborhood of $10,000 in that first year. That would increase over time as property values grew. And then in some of the bigger districts, you might have something in the range of thirty to even $90,000 in revenue to use towards redevelopment. The Village Market potentially, over the twenty-three years, you might have $10 million if there's no redevelopment that happens there. Of course, the intent of the TIF is you're spurring redevelopment, so you would have a redevelopment project. That would be additional funds that would be available to help with that specific project or to help with general public works. We also looked at the potential for revenue from a business district. We didn't consider eligibility of the business districts for any of these areas, but the eligibility criteria tend to be pretty similar to TIF. And so if you decided to move forward with the business district, we're pretty confident that we would find them to be eligible under those criteria as well. So business district, you can levy a tax up to one percent in point-two-five percent increments. So you can do point-two-five, point-five, point-seven-five, one percent. We're just showing point-five and one, just to keep the table somewhat simple. And again, first year of revenue and then revenue over the twenty-three-year period for each district. So, you know, year one, if you did a half percent, for most of these districts, you would have revenue in the range of $25,000 to $30,000. And then over the life of the, the business district, quite a bit more. Business districts are nice because you get the revenue more quickly, so there's just a few-month lag from the Department of Revenue and when they're providing you the revenue. And also, LaGrange Park has a lower sales tax rate than many of the surrounding communities. And so even if you included a business district tax of point-two-five or point-five or even one percent, you would only be bringing your sales tax rate up to the rate of the surrounding communities. So I think in some, in some communities, we have a fear sometimes if there's a business district created that you're making yourselves sort of uncompetitive by having higher sales taxes than other areas, but all of the other communities around here have a home rule sales tax as well, or a non-home rule. And so their tax rates are more like ten percent, whereas you're at nine percent currently. Business district taxes are also more flexible than TIF, so they can be helped with actual vertical improvements to commercial businesses. So things like tenant improvement, build-outs, actual rehab of buildings, new construction. TIF funds can only really be used for things like land acquisition, demolition, infrastructure, but you can't help with the actual building of privately-owned buildings. So we did find that you could move forward potentially with TIF districts in any of these five study areas. I think we're really seeing the greatest potential in two TIF districts, the, the Village Market area and then a combined Thirty-First Street Central and Barnesdale Corridor. Both of those areas have potential longer-term redevelopment sites at a sufficient scale for development. And in terms of the Village Market, you're also adjacent to LaGrange, which I think offers some just possibility in terms of kind of spillover development and activity. You also have quite a bit of traffic on LaGrange Road, so that's helpful when you're thinking about redevelopment. And those districts would have the, the highest potential for revenue sort of upfront, and given the redevelopment site potential, greater revenue over time. So we're recommending that in the short term, you would consider the TIF and/or business district designation for those two study areas, one being the Village Market area, second being the combined Thirty-First Street Central and Barnesdale. Adding those two districts together gives you just more flexibility in terms of how and where you use funds. You can use, you know, we have, I think, the good potential for redevelopment along Barnesdale Corridor and your vacant sites and the properties that are sort of up for sale and underutilized. But you would also then have funds that could be used along Thirty-First Street to help improve businesses, do infrastructure, streetscaping, things like that. We've also had discussions with staff about maybe if you move forward with this district, thinking about including the apartments that sort of run along the western corridor of Barnesdale. Though I think we haven't done eligibility for those, for those buildings, but there could be some improvements that could be made to the parking lots and sort of just the image along Barnesdale Corridor, if you did include those, those buildings as well. Of course, moving forward, you'll have to deal with Praxair and figure out sort of, should that be a standalone TIF district? Should, can it be included in this overall TIF district? If it is a standalone district, if you created that now without the ability to annex, or, you know, if we couldn't find eligibility for some reason to include it in the district, if they were connected in the future, you would still be able to port funds between the two TIFs. But if it's standalone, then basically, you know, the, the only TIF increment you have to help a potential business owner there is whatever's generated by that particular parcel. And you can't sort of use the broader increment. So I think ideally, you would be able to include that in the bigger district, but you could move forward with it on its own. And in any situation, the business district revenue can be used to help supplement the TIF and offers that, that sort of flexibility if you're interested. So I think one other thing we've talked about is preparing a potential redevelopment strategy for the Village Market study area or the Barnesdale Corridor. So this would be doing a little bit more work in terms of the market analysis to think about what those redevelopment opportunities are and what the concrete steps are that the village can take to help think about redevelopment, reinvestment in these different areas. And I think longer term, you might want to, you could consider the TIF designation for the other study areas, but we're not recommending that at this point, just because of sort of the limited redevelopment opportunities and the limited revenue potential. I think we don't see a big benefit to the village of, of moving forward with those at this time. Of course, if someone comes forward with a specific project or has something in mind, you could reconsider at that point, but right now, I think we would, we would focus on the other two areas. I guess we can take questions, and if you want, we can talk about these potential next steps and sort of timelines. But happy to take questions now.
Sure. I just have one question, Fran. About eight, 10 years ago, the board engaged upon a study for Thirty-First Street Corridor. And we came up with a plan to, to do the two anchors at Thirty-First Street and LaGrange Road and then Maple, and then in between the corridor from those two points to do easement improvements, to do facade improvements. So if, if we went down this path with the central district of Thirty-First Street, the TIF funds, which would be $41,000 or the first year, could be used as an incentive to have those businesses involved in a facade improvement program or a street, streetscape program, correct?
TIF funds can definitely be used for streetscaping and general public improvements, and some villages also set up sort of revolving loan funds and other funds like that that can be used for facade improvements and signage.
Okay, so we can, we can intermingle those two studies with the study that we did eight to 10 years ago and bring it into focus if we elect to do that portion of the TIF.
Oh, sure, yeah. And when you're actually designating a TIF district, there is a whole section about objectives, and there's what's called a project, a redevelopment project, which is often things like infrastructure improvements or other key thing, other key improvements the village wants to make. So through the process of creating the TIF district, you do outline sort of what the intended use of the funds are and what you're trying to address in the corridor. intended use of the funds are and what you're trying to address in the corridor. And those are totally appropriate uses.
Okay, because at that time, the board did invest some funds into it to get this study going. And it seems like then we were going to look at the village market area and we never got to it because of 2008 and all the other things that were going on. But the funds did not go wasted. Now, we can bring that study forward and utilize it in part of our process to redevelop that area. Any comments from any board members?
And I guess, just one other thing on the 31st Street Corridor. I know within SB-Friedman, we had considered, and I think we talked about this early on, you know, whether you would want to actually combine all three of those 31st Street districts. I know that would include residential properties, I think, single-family and potentially multifamily. But if you did do the whole corridor, then you would have even more flexibility in terms of streetscaping and overall improvements through that area. We didn't consider the eligibility of the residential areas in this study, but something that you could think about or even add on to in the future if you wanted to make improvements sort of more broadly along 31st Street.
And the board then would designate the projects that they wanted to do under the guidelines of TIF law?
Right, as long as the projects are, they fall under the TIF law and eligible expenses, the board and staff really can decide what projects to use the TIF funds for.
Okay, because, you know, being a resident then, if I'm in the TIF district, my concern is, well, what's the board going to do now? Because I'm a resident, are they going to change the property around me? Are they going to change my home? So, there is a fail-safe system where the board has to go out and get these projects approved.
Well, anyone who is requesting TIF assistance for a private project has to come to the board, to the village and request that assistance.
We couldn't impose it on them.
You would have a formal, you can impose it on them, no.
Okay. Any comments from any of the board? Trustee Lautner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, if there's a project to be recommended or proposed, then obviously that we would discuss that as a board here. But is there a TIF board? I mean, certainly, there's rules and regulations, as you described, for, you know, what's eligible for TIF districts, et cetera. But is there a working board that also then has to make a decision? Or is it pretty cut and dry?
The TIF law is pretty cut and dry in terms of eligible expenses and what TIF funds can be used for. There is a requirement that there is what's called a joint review board that's involved in the creation of any TIF district. So, if you moved forward with the TIF, there's a whole public process, there's public meetings, there's the public approval side. But then, the joint review board consists of all of the local taxing districts that are present in the particular TIF study area. And so, they hold a meeting and review the TIF plan, review the project, review the eligibility and provide guidance on whether to move forward with the TIF. And then that joint review board also meets annually to just review what's going on. So, there's input there. There's no state board that is sort of verifying every project that is approved in a particular village, if that's the question, but there is...
Well, that's exactly my question, is there's not a state board, but is it representatives from taxing bodies from your community? Or does it extend beyond that?
No, it's just the taxing districts that are active in LaGrange Park, so...
Okay.
It'd be the county, the school districts. I don't know if your park district is within the village or separate.
Can I just add something to that? So, the joint review board would meet annually to review what has happened in the TIF in the previous year, what has continued to be planned for the TIF. They do not have any authority over how the money is spent, though. That is at the discretion of the village board. So, they cannot say, "We don't think you should..." They can say, "We don't think you should spend the money on this project," but they can't prevent the village from doing so. In addition to the annual joint review board meeting, we would be required to submit an annual report to the state, to the Illinois Comptroller. There's a report that has to be completed every year and turned in in terms of, that outlines the money that has been generated through the TIF and what it's been spent on and how we propose to spend it in the future. I don't know what the state does with that report, other than post it to their website, but we are obligated to turn that information in every year.
Yeah, the state also requires that after 10 years, that a pretty detailed report be submitted for each TIF district. So, this is detailing everything that's been spent to date, the different types of projects, the impacts from the projects, anything that's been proposed or is pending. So, that happens at 10 years and then, I believe, near the end of the TIF as well. And there are some cities and communities that, you know, provide information on their website where you can see what money has been spent on, what the projects are. Some people do this at a very high level and it says, you know, $5 million for infrastructure, $2 million for affordable housing, $1 million for acquisition, but others provide a lot more detail in terms of the particular projects. So, there are lots of different ways to make sure that the information is getting out there.
And then the follow-on to that question is, yes, there would need to be public hearings, but can there also be representatives from the community? Does it have to be just taxing body representatives?
The joint review board, if there are residential units within the TIF, it has to require someone who lives within the TIF, the proposed TIF district. There's not a requirement that the public be included, but I would have to double-check to see if you can include public members.
Okay.
But I think you probably could.
Agree.
Seeing none of the comments, George, any comments from the Youth Commission on TIF? Thank you. Fran and Lance, thank you so much. I think our staff and Emily, thank you for a great job in putting this all together for us. You've outlined our next step, which would be our April 12th board meeting where the staff would collate the material, get it to the board, and our discussions would continue at that point.
Do you have any other closing comments?
I don't think so. I think if you don't have any other questions, I think we're good on our end. But I do think, you know, we're looking, we thank you for the opportunity to do the work and we're looking forward to working with you in the future and, you know, feel free to reach out if you do end up having other questions. I guess Lance will be the one that comes back for any future meetings for the next couple of months.
Okay. Fran, good luck. Lance, you'll be coming back to our next meeting then if we work with staff and... Okay. Thank you so much.
Nobody's coming.
Okay, any other comments? Julia?
I have no further comments.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming. Okay, moving on, we have Building and Zoning Committee, Trustee Zora.
One item on the agenda that requires a motion and action regarding Joel Osco or retail stands.
Check, check. Hold on one minute, Trustee Zora. Yes, yes, thank you so much, George.
Check, check, check. Can everyone hear me okay? Can everyone hear me okay? So, maybe an inch. Okay, all right. Each year, Joel Osco erects a seasonal greenhouse in their parking lot. Joel's requesting to install a 1,560-square-foot greenhouse that would house their seasonal flower and shrub sales. If approved, the structure would be completed in mid-April, April, and remain in use through early July. The proposed structure is the same size as what has been allowed for the past several years. This type of structure is regulated by Section 12.6 of the zoning code, which addresses temporary uses in structures. More specifically, Section 12.611 regulates temporary retail stands, specifically allows for them in commercial zoning districts, but limits their size to 250 square feet. Section 12.6A3, thank you. Hello? Is it on? Yeah, okay. Also requires village board approval for those temporary uses not specifically listed. Staff recommends approving the temporary use permit for Joel Osco to permit the installation of a temporary greenhouse structure. I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary use permit for Joel Osco located at 507 East Wood Lawn to allow for construction of a 1,560-square-foot temporary structure for seasonal retail sales, to be occupied on or after April 1st, 2016, and to be removed no later than July 15th, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Trustee Zora?
Yes, we approve this every year and it only helps Joel Osco sales for the summer. So, I have no reason not to approve this and I think it's a good item to move forward.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Any other comments from any trustees? Seeing none, Amanda Call the roll.
Trustee Massick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Trustee Zora.
Thank you.
Moving on, Public Safety Committee, Trustee Massick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items for discussion tonight, first being fire department turnout gear purchase. The fire department, once again, is continuing with their budgeted program to replace several sets of structural firefighting turnout gear on an annual basis. The goal of the program is to replace each firefighter's gear approximately every seven years, with some adjustments made depending on wear and tear of a particular individual's gear, as some firefighters are more active than others. In the past several years, the fire department conducted extensive research of various vendors of such turnout gear in regards to pricing, quality options, and safety. As noted in previous years, not all turnout gear is exactly the same, as there are minor differences in weight, stitching, available options, and available materials, et cetera. There is, though, a National Fire Protection Association standard, NFPA 1971, which manufacturers need to comply with. Just two years ago, we reviewed and evaluated gear from a new vendor and a new manufacturer, different from what had been purchased in the past, and we decided to switch our brand of gear to that which is manufactured by Karen's Globe. We did, again, briefly review some basic information and pricing from other manufacturers this year, but have decided to stick with the Karen's Globe at this point. As the department is very satisfied with the Karen's Globe gear, we obtained pricing for this year from the only two authorized dealers in the state of Illinois. And following are the results, municipal energy, or municipal emergency services, $1,919 per set, Illinois Fire Store, $1,995 per set. The purchase is being brought to the village board as the price exceeds $10,000, which will pay for the purchase of six complete sets of protective gear, which is trousers and coats. Total price is $11,514, less than the $13,000, which is budgeted, in the capital projects' budget for such purchases. Again, the turnout gear being purchased meets the current standards of the National Fire Protection Association for Protective Guardments for Structural Firefighting Standard 1971. It should also be noted that, in response to a question raised by village board member in previous years, it was reconfirmed that this turnout gear continues to be manufactured in the United States in Pittsfield, New Hampshire. So, this is, again, this is for discussion. The action to go on the consent agenda would be to approve the purchase of six sets of new protective gear, pants, and coats at the cost of $1,919 per set or a total of $11,514 from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated.
Trustee Massick?
Thank you. I would concur with this. It's something we've done. It's a, for the safety of our firefighters, something that, as is mentioned in the memo, we periodically turn over the gear. And this is the best price and it's in the budget, so I support it.
Any other comments from the board? Consensus?
Yes.
Okay, continue on, Trustee Massick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two, gotta find that. Where'd my menu go? What happened there? All right, I'll scroll through it all. All right. Okay, item number two, third-party receiving, managing, filing, and sharing of fire protection system inspection tests and maintenance reports. Village fire codes currently require that all required fire protection systems installed within the village are inspected and tested on a regular basis, and that the documentation of such inspections and tests are submitted to the LaGrange Park Fire Department for review and then are subsequently filed in the fire protection, filed for such property. Such systems include, but are not limited to, both fire alarm and fire sprinkler systems which require annual documentation and other automatic fire sup... such, geez, page moves again. And other automatic fire suppression systems, such as those protecting commercial cooking equipment and hoods, of which we require semi-annual documentation. This process provides documentation to the village that the required system should operate as designed, should a fire occur. It will also help to identify any deficiencies in the systems, which require maintenance and/or repair, and it will bring them to the attention of the property owner and fire department. Over the years, the tracking and enforcement of both the actual inspection and testing and of the proper documentation of such has been cumbersome and time-consuming. There have also been periods where it has been somewhat haphazard and less than timely due to limited resources in our fire prevention bureau. Although the bureau has been assisted by staff from other departments over the years to help with these efforts, which is greatly appreciated, the lack of a specific clerical staff member assigned to the fire department has made this program difficult to manage. As such, for the past several years, we have been contemplating using an outside agency or third-party provider to handle this task for us. We are currently at a point where we have had the time to research this type of service and bring it forward for consideration and potential implementation. Such providers offer an online interface to the tracking programs they use, so we, as the fire department, can access the status of the inspection and testing of fire protection systems on a regular basis. Such providers also offer varied levels of service and there is no cost to the village. The cost of the service is initially paid for by the fire protection contractor, who is inspecting and testing the fire protection system, who then, in most cases, passes that cost along to the end user or property owner. Based upon the services and options available, staff recommends that we enter into a service agreement with Inspection Reports Online.net or IROL LLC of North Aurora to provide the described service. We have contacted two of their references, who have both provided very positive reviews of the products, services, and overall customer service. Staff further recommends we enter into the agreement with IROL's bronze plan at a fee of $8.99 per report, which, again, is initially charged the inspection and testing service provider. The bronze plan is the most basic plan currently available by IROL LLC and includes the following: receive, manage, file, and share ITM reports submitted by any service provider, direct and real-time communication between AHG service provider and/or property owner, automatic email and US mail notifications, such as deficient and due pass due inspections, training and support, and you've got the IROL help desk. Should the board approve entering into the service agreement with IROL LLC, the village will also need to amend the fire protection code. This will ensure that those companies conducting inspection, testing, and maintenance of fire protection systems within the village, as well as those properties where such systems are installed, are properly registered with our third-party service provider, and that reports will be submitted as required. As such, staff also recommends amending our fire prevention code in a manner to accommodate such. And there's a note, although we have not included as part of our recommendation, you'll note the proposed service agreement from IROL also includes a potential for sharing revenue, which would allow for an unspecified dollar amount, to be returned to the village based upon each report processed, which would be used for cost recovery in relation to managing this program and the related fire prevention bureau services on our end. If there is interest, we can discuss that at a later date. Happy to review it and bring that up as a discussion item later. But the action would be for third-party receiving, managing, filing, and sharing of fire protection system, test and maintenance reports. The motion would, on the consent agenda, would be to authorize village manager to execute a service agreement with Inspection Reports Online, IROL LLC, for the purpose of receiving, managing, filing, and sharing inspection, test, and maintenance reports for fire protection systems. There's a secondary motion, which would also go on the consent agenda, to approve an ordinance amending the fire prevention code requiring those with fire protection systems to register with the village's designated ITM report management system service provider, requiring the submittal of ITM reports to such provider.
Discussion, Trustee Massick.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was a long one, but it's, looks like it's something that makes a lot of sense, especially considering it's at no cost to the village. It frees up some staff time and makes sure that these reports, which are essential, are documented, maintained, and accessible. I would support this. As for the revenue share thing, I think we could do that, bring that up at a later date.
Any comments from the board? Trustee Raco?
Thank you, Mr. President, yes. Two questions. If the agreement, after, I see it's three years on the date, if we want to, then it can be renewed for two years. At that time, is the price... At, at that time, is the price readjusted then, or is it, is it locked in at $899?
Believe, unless, I brought, uh, just so, and if you're not familiar, this is John Carpenter, one of our division chiefs. He runs our fire prevention bureau, so I've asked him to, uh, be here for questions. I don't believe we, uh, anticipated that question, although we anticipated a bunch. I believe we're going to have to see what the fee is, that there's, you know, it's a standard fee for, this $899 is a standard fee for all their, uh, clients. I believe we would have to see at that time. I don't believe, looking at the contract, it locked in that rate, um, unless John knows otherwise. Do you remember, John?
Okay.
So, I guess at that point, we would have to say, can we renew at this rate, or are we willing to continue with a new rate?
Okay. And, and the reason why I asked it, is I was wondering, um, this does sound like a great idea, and it passed through, but my only thought is, is it, um, and we should lock into, I guess, a three-year, if that's, my thought is, if it's, if it's locking into that rate, and, you know, I'd hate to say, do a year, and then all of a sudden, next year, it's $1299 or something, you know, it's, it's a silver rate for the bronze quality. But I, you know, I'm just wondering also, though, is, since this is new for us, if we should be considering, um, one year, uh, you know, and, and then renew, just to see if we're happy with their, since it's so new, you know, it, it, I'm a little tentative about the three-year, maybe, from your experience, and from, uh, excuse me, all the referrals that they had, and you've contacted them, and you say, hey, don't worry about it, Pat, you know, that three-year is fine. Otherwise, that's one thought. If I did do the one year, if we did, I'd want to then say, but we want to lock in for the $899 if we decide to go in, what, two more years? You know what I'm saying? Just an option after a year to read, to new.
Um, overall, we're comfortable with the agreement, but I'm willing, you know, I think you bring up an excellent point. We can try to negotiate something differently if the village board wishes. We're comfortable with they, what they proposed. In having Kathy review it, she, uh, had suggested some other things, such as, number one was a possible one-year term, or a negotiable renewable term, instead of just automatically two years. And also, if there's a better cancellation right, like a 90-day cancellation right. They replied to some of our concerns, and they said they get requests for contract language quite often, although we would talk about the specifics, you know, prior to board approval, if we had specifics that we were looking for. Um, I, I guess we were comfortable in looking at what they proposed, and we had proposed some questions to them in relation to that, again, based on the review of the contract. We're comfortable, maybe, you know, I didn't consider that, try it for a year. I don't think we're going to get everybody on board within the first year. They'll be on board, but I don't know if we're going to get a full understanding of the program, because some of these systems are only tested once a year. So, it may be 10 months from now, when their due date is, we may not even get it on the database until that point. So, I would say at a minimum, a two-year start, if not three, you know? So, maybe we would consider that.
A two-year with a lock-in of $899 for the third year.
Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, they, they do have a 60-day, there is a 60-day cancellation for non-performance, right? Which needs to be proved, of course, um, gets in, gets into all that, but I certainly understand your, your point, Trustee Rocco, you know, with, you know, it's, it's new. But, um, you know, I think we want to give it time, plenty of time, to prove itself, whether or not it's, it's a good, it's a good process, you know? So, maybe the, like you said, maybe the two-year versus the three-year. But just to make sure I understand, our, our people do this now. John and his group and staff go out and, and do this. So, with the proposal here, this would be, um, a third party that we don't know that's representing LaGrange Park, as I understand it. So, and I know that it looks like the client is, is required to, to provide, uh, a certificate of insurability and liability and things of that nature, but are, are, I mean, are we appropriately covered with a third party representing us? I'm not sure to the extent of the liability insurance, how well we would be covered for them doing this.
It's, it's very similar to the arrangement we have with Don Morris and Associates, who does our plan review. Don Morris carries liability insurance, and I assume that this, the contract requires this company to carry insurance as well.
Yeah, uh, three, no, less than three, but both of us have to carry the insurance, and both of us, same amount, and have to insure each other, and him is insured. 2.5.
The double indemnity. I guess that would be my, my question and concern, is the, the assurance that the, the appropriate liability insurance is, is in place, as new representatives of an organization representing us going into our, our residential homes.
If I can explain a little further, from their standpoint, this third party will not be doing inspections. They don't actually go out in the field. They're only a reporting agency. So, if I use, I decide to use ABC Company to come in and check my fire alarm system, which we do at the village hall, I hire ABC Company. Still, ABC Company, by our new ordinance and by the program, has to take that final report and send it to this company. So, they are not responsible for any field work.
Gotcha. So, it's reporting only? Okay.
Trustee Zora?
Thank you. Okay, sorry about that. I, I guess I don't have a question, I just had a comment. Because the cost is, is pretty minimal, and it is being passed on to the fire protection contractor, unless it's increasing by a large exponential number, I, I don't see an issue with the fee increase. I don't know if that's just me, but I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Any other comments?
Yeah, my, if I can just say one thing, you know, my concern, and, and again, I think I would, we did not talk about the revenue sharing. You know, some companies, if I'm ABC Fire Alarm Company, some companies may or may not pass that on to our local business. So, I guess down the road, does this $899, if they decide to raise it by $3, is it going to cost our small business or large business, you know, an extra every time they have their fire alarm tested? We got a response back that says a lot of them don't, right? They don't pass it on. So, that they're used to these programs, I'm assuming, um, and they don't pass that on. But if they want to put it on their, you know, hey, your inspection costs $200, but you're now requiring $899 to pass it on, we're going to have to charge the end user. So, that would be the impact for those that do that. We were told that most don't in our inquiries, um, but that would be the, you know, the change in the fee. Not to us, yes, to the contractor, but possibly to an end user.
Thank you, Chief. Are we comfortable putting this on consent?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, just for clarification, are you okay then consent as the three-year and two-year, if, at this point?
Yes, as proposed.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes public safety, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. And moving on to public works, Trustee Sheen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, two action items tonight. First one will start with the 2016 sewer point repairs. Uh, the purpose of this agenda item is to authorize sewer point repairs, repair work necessary to improve and rehabilitate combination sewer pipes throughout the village, using funds budgeted in the fiscal year 2015, 2016 sewer fund. Sewer inspections were conducted last year, and the inspection reports were reviewed by staff and Hancock Engineering. From these reports, a list of areas in need of sewer point repairs was compiled. The sewer repairs consist of replacing various depths of sewer main with and without service connections. The total project cost includes funds for all necessary restoration work. These point repairs will reduce the chances of total pipe failure and reduce the likelihood of sewer backup into nearby homes. Bid specifications were prepared by Hancock Engineering. A notice to bidder was published in the Suburban Life dated, uh, February 17th, 2016. The bid opening was held on March 1st, and the lowest responsible bidder is Suburban General with a total bid of $43,350. There were five other companies that bid, uh, in the fiscal year the village had budgeted in the sewer fund. Capital Outlay, oh, five dash forty-four dash four dash four-two-zero, $50,000 for the, $50,000 for the point repairs and restorations. Staff is requesting that the board accept the bid proposal for, from Suburban General in the amount of $43,350. Therefore, Mr. President, uh, motion, one, to accept the proposal of Suburban General in the amount of $43,350, and, two, to authorize up to $6,650 in additional spending for a total amount not to exceed $50,000, should field conditions vary, to be expensed to the fiscal year 2016 sewer fund, and, three, to authorize the village president to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Of a motion, a second discussion, Trustee Sheen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Suburban General has worked well. They're a local company of multiple generations of, uh, LaGrange Park resident-owned, and they've always helped us out, whether it be through the village, or, uh, an incident I remember 15 years ago, when I was on the library board, that could have cost a lot of money, and they were there to save the day. I would definitely support this 100% sure.
Thank you, Trustee Sheen. Any other comments from any board members? Trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just have a question, and that is, because it's such a jump from, um, which is, you know, wonderful, Suburban General, as you said, um, we heard that they've, uh, a good contractor, in good standing, we used them before, but I was just curious, why such a dramatic difference?
Well, I, I'd be happy to respond to that, trustee. Suburban General is very parochial in their approach to doing work within the village. They were our low bidder last year as well, and, oh yeah, the year before that, and the year before that. In addition to that, some of the folks that are higher, I, I know, for example, Girardi Sewer and Water has picked up a very large water main project in another village, so they're not just, not bidding it very aggressively. They, they never, don't want to participate, because some year they may want to, um, back on a competitive basis, but apparently not this year. So, I, I think, um, that's why we bid it. I mean, it's, it's a great example of why you put it out to the marketplace, just to try to, sure everybody's as competitive as they can be.
Thank you.
Just going to say, the one other thing we saw with Suburban General is, um, their onsite visits to try to review the locations that they would be working, far more intensive. Some of the other ones just looked at the specs on the sheet and pulled their general numbers out of their own, you know, prior bids. They actually came out, looked at the site, looked at what needed to be done, and that's why they're able to really refine the, the numbers.
Follow-up on that, they did, we met them on-site. They, um, most of these repairs are not on LaGrange Road, they're just off LaGrange Road. They don't have to be out in a live lane of traffic, so I think some of these folks were under the assumption they would be in a live lane of traffic and didn't do their homework as diligently.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, a man to call the roll?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next action item I have is the 2016 commercial water meter replacement project. Uh, the purpose of this agenda item is to authorize the purchase and installation of 54 commercial water meters as identified, at identified locations throughout the village, using funds budgeted in the fiscal year 2015, 2016 water fund. The commercial water meter replacement program, project includes 54 water meters, which have been identified in the village's commercial, industrial, school, and larger apartment complex areas. The meters were originally installed in 2000. Due to the new EPA low lead standards, replacement parts for these meters are no longer available, and staff cannot repair the existing meters. Water meter technology has improved in the last 15 years to allow better measurement of low-flow usage on large commercial meters. The new meters are designed with floating ball technology, which makes the impeller weight, weightless in water, and which reduces the chances of problems going forward and increases the accuracy of the meters. The meters also have all electronic registers, which eliminates rotating numbers, which can be under-read. The specifications for this project are for census omni-meters, which are compatible with our existing meters. No new equipment or software, software are needed to integrate the new meters into our meter reading and utility billing system. HD Waterworks is the authorized vendor for census meters in the Chicagoland region. A list of meter sizes, costs, and appurtenances is attached. Total cost for equipment for the commercial meter replacement program is estimated at $49,918. A 10% contingency should field conditions, uh, be different is, is requested. Bid specifications were prepared by village staff for the installation portion of the project. A request for proposal was published in the Suburban Life newspaper on February 10th, 2016. The bid opening was held on March 1st, and the lowest responsible bidder was Dunright Plumbing with a total bid of $18,729. Uh, there were two other bids, um, that came in. Again, uh, Dunright was, uh, lower United meters and Calumet City meters, plumbing and heating. In the fiscal year, the village had budgeted in water fund, Supply 03 dash forty-four dash five dash five-seven-six, $109,682 for this program. Uh, staff is requesting that the board authorize the meter purchase with HD Waterworks in the amount of $49,918, plus a 10% contingency, and accept the bid proposal from Dunright Plumbing, Inc., in the amount of $18,729. Uh, Mr. President, uh, motion to, number one, authorize the purchase of 54 census omni-meters and appurtenances from HD Waterworks to be expensed to the fiscal year 2016 water fund in an amount not to exceed $49,918, plus a 10% contingency, and, two, accept the proposal of Dunright Plumbing, Inc., in the amount of $18,729 for meter installation, plus a 10% contingency to be expensed to the fiscal year 2016 water fund, and, three, authorize the village president to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Motion, a second, Trustee Sheen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I think, Brendan, if I'm, uh, correct, United meters, UMI did the residential meter, it's, when we had those all changed 15 years ago, too, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, and I am, I'm shocked that there's such a, uh, difference, because, um, I know other utilities use United meters on a regular basis. Um, I, I have no problem, uh, wanting this passed, because I'm familiar with the work that Pat and Dunright Plumbing do, and I would have no hesitation that, uh, they have done other...
They have replaced commercial meters for us in the past.
Right.
Thank you, Trustee Sheen. Any other comments? Trustee Rocco?
Um, yes. I, I, I guess, uh, they're the lowest bidder, so we want to go with them. But I, I just, um, coming off a bathroom remodel that I'm doing because of a plumbing leak that was unfortunately, um, done years ago by Dunright, and then I find out from other person when I was saying that, you know, Dunright. So, it's more of a personal, you know, that I hear of, failure. So, I'm feeling comfortable, I just, I guess I want to be reassured, you were saying they've done work for us in the past, and you're comfortable with their, because, you know, it's just one person, I don't want to take one experience, but...
Absolutely. No, we're comfortable with them. We have, we've had no issues, we've inspected the work on multiple houses and, uh, plus the own work that they've done for the village, there's not an issue there.
Thank you.
If you're going to get it, get it done right. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, a man to call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Trustee Sheen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Finance Committee, Trustee Rocco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the first item up is, um, to, uh, accept a proposal from B K D L L P to provide auditing services for the fiscal year 2016 through 2018. The village is required by state law to have an annual audit completed by a certified public accounting firm. Staff prepared a request for proposals for auditing services, which was sent out to potential firms on January 13th, 2016. Five firms responded to the RFP. The Finance Committee met on February 23rd to review the proposals and provide a recommendation to the village board. At the Finance Committee meeting, staff recommended the village select B K D L L P to provide auditing services for fiscal years 2016 through 2018. This recommendation is based on the quality of B K D's proposal. B K D is a top-ranked national firm with extensive local government experience, and B K D's proposal fees are in the mid-range... B K D's proposal fees are in the mid-range of the responding firms. Following discussion, the finance committee concurred with staff recommendation of B K D. Staff recommends, the village board accept the proposal from B K D L L P to provide auditing services for the fiscal years 2016 through 2018. Tonight, B K D, they will draft an engagement letter for the fiscal year 2016 for the village board to approve at our board meeting on March twenty-second. So we move to accept a proposal from B K D L L P to provide auditing services for the fiscal years 2016 through 2018.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes, Mr. President, um, it was great, we did have, uh, we, it was great that we got the response that we did of the, um, five returns on the R F P. Um, Selden Fox, who we've used the past, um, has been a wonderful firm to work with, and, um, it wasn't that we had any, uh, um, concerns with Selden Fox, it was just that we felt that it was time for us to just, um, make a change, just, um, because it's been so long, it was more out of what we've heard from different residents that maybe we should be looking at elsewhere. Um, and B K D seems like a, uh, they came in strong, and, um, seemed very thorough, and, um, we felt confident that they would be a good fit. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rocco. Trustee Messick, trustee, well, I'll say, Casera, any comments from the committee? Any other comments? Seeing none, a man to call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Continue on, trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to report on the status of the budget. Um, this evening, before tonight's work session, we met, the finance committee met for the first time to discuss the draft budget. This year, the village developed two draft budgets due to the referenda. Both drafts were reviewed at this meeting. In general, both budgets are focused on meeting a set of objectives, objectives. They are: build capacity for the new dispatch center, the L T A C C, and continue to push greater financial sustainability, uh, by doing that, maintaining the twenty-five percent balance and grow it; plan for potential of a tax increment financing district; engage in a water and sewer rate study that looks comprehensively at the fees needed to better address infrastructure needs and consider fee options; also to better meet the needs, better meet service demands with enhanced administration report in three areas, the fire department, the buildings department, and the public works department; and adhere to the village board's five priorities. These five priorities are: maintain fiscal responsibility with sound budget practices; improve and maintain infrastructure and roads; maintain and communicate good government practices and services; maintain public services through safe practices and proper equipment; attract, retain, and expand business. One budget contemplates the bonds and provides accountability for those monies while seeking enhanced capacity for capital needs through the M F T fund. The other budget contemplates the status quo, no bonds, and maintains a road program within the M F T fund. The finance committee will meet again on March twenty-second to discuss the one budget, which we'll know, um, after the election, a week from today, and once results in the referenda are known. The one thing is, we do anticipate additional sewer work that may increase the cost. Um, at the time that the budget was done, it looked like they would not need sewer lining, but since, um, since the budget had, the drafts were, um, done, it has come to, um, the public works' attention that, um, work may need to be done, sewer work, and that may, uh, the dollars will then have to be incorporated into the budget. Um, key dates for this fiscal year's budget, and like I said, twenty-second at six P M, that we'll have our finance committee meeting, um, and Tuesday, April twelfth at seven fifteen, there's going to be a budget workshop with a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year sixteen-seventeen budget. If the finance committee schedules additional meetings, we will provide that update. The final draft of the budget will be on the April twenty-sixth meeting agenda for the board's consideration. This is the update on the draft budget. Staff will begin its work on the five-year plan, as one budget progresses towards finalization or approval. More to come on that. That concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Well done, trustee Rocco. Thank you. Moving on, village manager, Julia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items. The first item I have to report is that a special edition of the rose clippings on the two thousand sixteen referenda was sent out to all village addresses this week. We have additional copies available at Village Hall, should you want an additional copy. Uh, that rose clipping special edition is also available on the village's website, if folks would like to take a look at that. We encourage, uh, folks to read that and become informed on the facts, and, uh, as always, uh, there's information there about how to ask questions regarding the referenda. The second item I wanted to report is really more of a comment, as a result of the presentation provided by S B Friedman tonight. As President DiCipio mentioned earlier, uh, we will come back, uh, to the board at the April work session meeting to discuss the next steps as part of the TIF feasibility study. Uh, from today's date until that date, we encourage the village board, uh, if there are any questions, and staff for that matter, if there are any questions on that presentation, to please forward those questions to assistant village manager Emily Rodman, so that we can have those questions and answers ready for that work session meeting. And that's all I have to report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Julia. Uh, moving on, village clerk?
I just have one item to report. Early voting continues until Monday, the fourteenth, with Election Day being next Tuesday, the fifteenth, and that is all I have to report.
Thank you, Amanda. And then CRC committee, trustee Casera, any comments on the presentation?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, it was great to, to get the results, um, and it was, I think it was great that we got the results in the same time that we were able to share with the, uh, with the village residents and those in attendance here. Um, I think it was, uh, very positive and exciting to see that there is opportunity, and, uh, with, thank you again for, Emily, for all your work, and, um, looking forward to next, uh, to April twelfth, when we can start having some great discussions regarding, uh, our opportunities and next steps.
And thank you, trustee Casera, and congratulations to your committee for bringing this and starting the ball rolling, and it seems like we're on our way. Um, I just have a couple of things. Sadly to say, the village referendum tour is over. If you didn't get a chance to see it, there will be no reunion.
Never say never.
Right. We hope never, um, but just urge everyone to get out next Tuesday, a week from today, and vote. Um, the drive-down with the West Central Municipal Conference is May, uh, April sixth. I hear we have quite a contingency going down, a couple trustees and staff, and we're looking forward to it. Um, I talked with NAS, and Brendan is working with us on this, uh, we will present NAS with an award for state championships when the, uh, sign comes in and the item comes in, so that will, that will happen. The other thing, and this is great, we're going to have another presentation, uh, the L T Lions National High School Swim Team won state championship, and we will have them come, and we will present them with, with, uh, a document, so, good things are happening, we're state champs all over, everyone get out and vote next Tuesday. Um, I have no other, uh, items on the agenda, any new business? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.